We do come to order, this is an open public meeting and it's been so advertised. Thank you for that. I'll ask Mrs. Coleman to go to roll, please.
Issues. Mrs. Vopel? Mrs. Butchko? Just yell, these aren't working that. Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey? Mrs. Ezekiel? Yeah, I got you. Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Okay, let's get a stand for the flag salute. The flags on back of room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We agree publicly, we are to stand one nation under God, indivisible, every and just for all. Mine's working. We'll share.
You have to say all the words tonight, Bill.
Okay.
Presentations and everything.
Hey, it's not a problem. Okay, there is no executive session this evening and we'll go to... I want finished business either, so we have nothing to discuss there. We'll go to the first public comment section.
Any presentations?
Oh, did I turn two pages? Sorry.
I'm going to go first and then...
Okay. Go as you're planning.
Yes, okay, we're good. Thank you, Matt. All right, I'll go first.
Go ahead.
So this is part two of the shared service presentation. Last month, I did an overview of all the services. Mr. Starks wanted some more information done on the shared services that we provide, that Collingswood provides to Oakland. Again, this is just a reiteration of last month's presentation, but you know, why do we do this? And when it comes to the area of technology, it's increased purchasing power, Chromebooks, screens, all that we provide, a lot more. We provide information on other tickets, so what we did is I just gut and pasted what's included in the shared service contract with Collingswood Oakland. So we provide network support, desktop support, and purchasing competition, door access control, joint purchasing, and telephone... Sorry, my mouth is not loud enough. And phone system maintenance, and then any other services on a time immaterial as needed basis. Right now, the contract allows for 16 hours a week, so two full days of a Level One tech in the district, and then all the other techs chip in as needed for large projects. And currently, the Collingswood Tech Department, when I wrote this, we had five technicians. We just had a technician resign, so we're back down to four, so we have posted for an additional technician. But currently, Collingswood has a tech department of five, and right now, all five are involved in resolving tech tickets that are put in between Oakland and Collingswood School District and in the order of importance and the type of problem that is being presented in the ticket. Currently, as of yesterday, we had 82 open tickets for Oakland staff members, and Oakland does continue to maintain a one-to-one Chromebook initiative, just like Collingswood does. Okay, so by school year, this is 1920, these are a number of tickets. Obviously, as you see, most of the tickets being generated in August and October when staff are coming back to school. Sorry, I think I jumped the... Gosh, I had this problem last month. So 1920, there was a total of 153 tickets, meaning staff went in and created 153 tickets requesting support, 151 tickets were solved. Forty-seven percent of the tickets were one-touch tickets, meaning they were able to be fixed by the tech first time around. All right, 2021, there was 195 tickets put in by Oakland staff members. Eleven were unsolved at the end of school year. 173 tickets were solved, and of those 173 tickets, 35% were one-touch tickets and 27% were something that had to... The staff member had to come back or something more involved, so they couldn't just fix it on the first go-round. And again, this is by month. All right, 2122, 247 tickets were created. Thirty-three tickets at the end of the school year were still unresolved, 225 were resolved, and 60, almost 61%, were one-touch tickets by our tech team. Sorry, guys. Tech is great when it works, isn't it? Here comes my technician. Right? Oh, it's on here. That's... My USB is on this one, so you may want to switch over when it's your turn. I'm almost done, folks. Okay, so where are we this school year? Start of school year, you had 77 tickets were created, right now 30 are unresolved. Fifty-two tickets have been solved and 67 of the tickets are one-touch tickets. Each year, I create a new shared service agreement, not just for the area of technology, but for all of your shared services. We look to see what worked, what didn't work. If staff members have changed, either they retired or left the district, I put in the new salaries and I review everything so that Oakland is not paying too much and you know, and the service close to what you need. I believe when we first started with Oakland, you had tech more, and then they was asked to drop down to two days. So at the end of this school year, if it's thought that you needed three days for tech, then we will renegotiate the contract. But currently, the contract is two days, 16 hours. So in order for us to continue to be helpful with areas of technology and in shared services, we continue to look at our performance, and the way we do that is looking at the number of tickets, right? How many tickets? What kinds of tickets? That helps me to hire the correct personnel. And both boards review the shared service contracts in the spring of each year, and that's usually done during the budget development, so probably bound for February and March. I'll start sending those out. What can Oakland do to make the system a little more efficient? Enforcement of the online ticketing system. We're kind of a broken record with that, but when the district technicians are present, and that's in every school between Collingswood and Oakland, the online system is bypassed quite often. Again, I just did it, Patrick. Stop what you're doing and come fix my technology. It's just human nature, but when that happens, I'm not getting good data to present, like Mr. Starks wanted data. We were able to get the data out of the system, but I'm not 100% sure it's 100% accurate because there's a lot of tech needs that are getting resolved that aren't going through the system, so we really don't know the areas that we need help in. So yeah, we just need to use the systems, though we continue to bring the data back to the board and back to the tech team, just to make sure that we have the staff with the right skills to fix the tickets. And that is the end of the technology deep dive, Mr. Starks.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
So for the tickets that you reported...
Yes.
Does that include the tickets that parents submitted when their child had a problem with Chromebook during remote learning?
No, no, these are staff tickets. Yeah.
I also have a question. I think you said there's currently 83 tickets open?
Yes.
Is that an average number of tickets that are usually open at one time? It seems high compared...
It is high in both districts right now. Like I said, we've started the year short of tech, we hired him, and then he just left the district, so we're kind of chasing our tails right now in the area of technology. We're hearing, I'm hearing the complaints every day. I can't walk into a building without basically being assaulted about it. It is an area. We're trying very, very hard to catch up. What we are finding, I know in the area of Oakland, it's the projectors, right? We're getting lots of complaints. My projector's not working. They just came in. They've been back ordered for a year and a half. There's literally nothing we can do about that. They, I think they just came in this week, so the guys need to, again, look at their schedules and re, you know, look at the workflow to get the projectors out into classrooms that need them. We still have some laptops that are back ordered. There's lots of stuff that we've put in that we just haven't seen come on site yet. So some of the stuff, if it is lingering, most likely there's a story to it. But again, it's helpful to me because if it does linger, I will start getting the tickets at my level, and then I can circle back with Patrick if there's an issue, and some stuff I know about, right? Because I do the buying, so I know when something's pending, like I know with the projectors, I just know they've just been incredibly hard to locate anywhere in the state of New Jersey. But we are short-staffed right now. We are working as hard as we can to resolve everybody's concerns.
And the tickets are all categorized as like critical and moderate and major?
Yeah. When the tickets come in, Patrick does look at them. We are looking to, I spoke to Dr. McDowell earlier today, to possibly change the ticketing system or refine it so that when a ticket is put in, depending on the type of ticket, it'll give you an estimate of the time. So if it's a, my Chromebook's not working versus the phone system is out in the district, I'm just using that because that seems to be, we did have that issue in the beginning of the school year. We had an elementary that just didn't have phones for like three days. Based on the priority and the nature of it, it's going to give you an estimate of how long it's going to take. It's kind of like the Apple Store, you know, not to, but like if you bring in your MacBook, they may say seven days, seven to 10 days. We need to start giving staff and parents a reasonable expectation, and we have to try to start managing the instant fix, instant, I want this now, because sometimes that's just, we can't do it. And so that's, we have to manage that a little bit better going into the new year.
If you run one of the, one of the numbers, take this on there, either one of the slides.
Does it matter which year?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, this is 2122.
Created tickets are 247, but the unsolved and solved don't total 247. They're close. I heard what you're saying. What I know, I'm going past everything I know at this point about technology anyway. Okay, that was the only question I had. Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. Great. And again, we are trying, we're going to meet, we're going to meet with the tech team. Hopefully, I get another technician, and we are hopefully going to refine the process to get more realistic timelines out to folks, but this is a problem statewide. I just had a meeting today with some VAs in the county, and tomorrow I have another meeting, and we're all struggling here because we just can't keep technicians and we can't get our stuff in.
Ask another question?
Yeah.
This was like what Timmy said, is there were 82 open tickets at this point in time, and these are only staff tickets?
Correct.
We have, how many staff do we have? 30 staff, and we have 82 open tickets?
Well, some, one staff member could put in five, six tickets. I know I personally probably put in about a dozen tickets so far this school year.
I'm sorry. That part doesn't make sense, not knowing anything, you know? Somebody puts in three tickets, sorry to count these three tickets, somewhere along this line, one of them is resolved.
I think they go back to the priorities on whether it's a high priority, and also like, you know, one teacher could have three Chromebooks that are down, and that's three tickets on top of something else, on top of an email being missed or something like that.
But to his, to Patrick's point, though, if they had an open ticket from last year, it's still open in this year, so that number, it may not have been 83 created since September.
But we had a lot of summer, some of the tickets are been solved by the...
Sure, but if they're, if they're, and I'm just speaking from experience, if there are computers or things that haven't come in yet, that could be a critical mass. I don't know. I mean, without a breakdown of what they are.
No, that was pretty accurate. We also are looking at, so right here, created tickets, so this is for the school year from the day teachers came back to the day I ran the data, which was the end of last year. So we only had 77 tickets created. So we have a total of 82 open tickets. This school year, we've only had 77 created. There are only 30 solved from this school year. That means 52 of them have been outstanding. A chunk of them are related to the projectors that we've been waiting on for a year and a half, so when a teacher puts it in, just because we ordered the projectors, we don't close out the ticket and say, "Cool, you're good to go," because we ordered them. The ticket stays open because it's an outstanding project, so there are a lot of tickets that are outstanding, they're waiting for supplies to come in, that are just sitting there waiting for them to be solved. The numbers are slightly skewed because if a teacher puts in multiple tickets, on our end, we do combine them, so if a teacher puts in a ticket and says, "Hey, my projector's broken," they put it in in April, we're ordering projectors, we're waiting for them to come in, they come back in September, they had a reasonable expectation to have it resolved, it wasn't, they put in another ticket. We merge those tickets into one, but it still tracks it as two separate tickets. So the data is slightly skewed in that fact, but the 82 unresolved tickets are largely the outstanding projects that we need to do. There are, I'm sure there are some mixed in there that are closed. We have a tendency to close out a ticket, and then a staff member will be super courteous and reply back and say, "Thank you so much for handling this." That reopens the ticket. So that's why the, that's why the one-touch numbers are sometimes off, because if we don't see that and then go back and enclose it, so sometimes they can be a little off.
Nobody thanks them anymore. You're creating a problem. Thanks, man.
No problem.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Any more questions? All right, and, all right, next up, Windsor, are you up next? I've got both, I've got all the presentations loaded, so...
Can I ask a question, not a few, but of Ms. Baldwin? We have teachers that have three Chromebooks?
Yeah, they're all cards.
So every student has a Chromebook, so every class has 25 Chromebooks. If three of them are not working, that could be three tickets.
Yeah, but we, I thought we said that the students' Chromebooks weren't included.
No, the parents, yeah.
They're not going home. Now that we're back, it's very difficult to... Okay.
Hi, everyone. This is the district test report for 2021-22, last year's NJSLA. The state also wants information on access testing and DLM. So the NJSLA, or New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, covers topics of language arts, math, and science. It's for students in grades three through nine. There is 11 there for that science piece. Basically, we go through, in the high school, there's some math courses, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, and then 11th grade, sorry, in science, we have grades five, eight, and 11. The DLM is similar, but it really just targets the most significant, students with IEPs that have the most significant intellectual disabilities. Like I said, it's about, like I said, the top 1% of those students. It is still content such as math, language arts, and science. Last year, just, I mean, you won't see data on this because last year, we actually did not have any DLM students. And the access test is for ELL students. Basically, it sees how well they're progressing with the English language. There are four areas that they look at, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. They do get an overall score, and if they get a score of 4.5 or higher, they could actually be removed from the EL program. Regarding performance levels, the NJSLA has five levels. Levels four and five, the exceeding expectations and meeting expectations, that if students score of that level, that basically means that they are on course, that they will be ready for next year's class. In science, I don't know why they do this, but they decide to make only four levels, same test but four levels, but that's okay. Levels three and four are the same thing as four and five for the math and language arts portion, it means that they are on track. You can't, those are the breakdowns of the ranges of scores. They're similar, but there are some inconsistencies between grades five, eight, and 11. The DLM has four levels as well, advanced, at target, approaching, and emerging. And the access test actually has six levels to help EL teachers guide their students better. So as we go through the actual scores, if there is a group or a subgroup that actually has less than 10, sorry, less than 10 students, that data actually cannot be presented because it's too small of a sample size. So here we're looking at Oakland's ELA scores. The reason why they're highlighted is because Oakland did really well on language arts. You can see that they surpassed the state average in grades both three, four, and five. All right, so like I said, Oakland did very nice in the language arts. And done. Okay, so looking at the math scores, fifth grade was pretty close. We do need, we have a little bit of work to do with the math piece, but as I go further in presentation, we do have strategies in place to really help our math scores for the rest of the year. And science, again, science, I think, was very close. It is, science is odd because they never, they test us, and even at the 11th grade level, the high school level, it still has yet to be any type of requirement. I guess they're just like, know how we're doing. But again, Oakland was pretty close to the New Jersey average. All right, so as I said, we, I can't, we don't have any DLM data because no one took it, and actually, Oakland only had three ELL students last year, so again, that data we really can't show in terms of percentage of the number. I did do a subgroup, the only one I really could do is the gender piece. Stereotypically, in terms of ELA, we see that females did better than males for language arts in fourth and fifth grade. It kind of reversed for math. I would like in fifth grade to see some of that, some discrepancies or the gaps a little bit closer. I'm not quite sure. I'd have to really investigate a little more of why there was such a gap in fifth grade. And then the last one was just, in science, only fifth grade, that's why you only see one graph. This is actually, because usually, I recall, again, this is the first test we've taken in, what, like three years, since 2018-19? Normally, the gender piece is a lot closer than this, so I don't know why there is a little more differential between the, between males and females. So as I said, the socioeconomic, the students with disabilities, and the racial comparisons, those groups are just too small for me to actually show numbers. So as I said earlier, ELA did really well in grades three, four, and five. Oakland's math and science, we do have a little bit of work. Fifth grade actually was very close, it was less than a percent away from the state average. Let me see, we talked about the access and DLM information. We talked about subgroups. And like I said, the only subgroup we really could show was gender. So here's, here's the good part. So what are we doing this year and moving forward? So we are looking more into Hattie's Visible Learning, which are strategies that help guide instruction. It is tied into Oakland's Acceleration Plan. Oakland has a new math program this year called Into Math. The program itself has a diagnostic tool, which will give us some information in terms of where we want to work with on our students. Also has more supportive, the MTSS, the multi-tiered system of supports, that have more resources to help struggling students. For all K to five grades, we do have learning acceleration teachers to provide more math intervention. All right, so definitely, the classes will have more support. Oakland staff has PLCs, which increases the collaboration time, so I remember as a teacher, it was really difficult, like collaboration time was during the hallways, like the five minutes of passing or four minutes of pass time, you're like, "Hey, what are you doing?" So it's nice that Oakland has time for collaboration to work together and really improve teacher efficacy. Oakland's going to continue working on the social-emotional learning. And Oakland has added ELL intervention time for, for classes, for teachers to visit all K to five classes for writing. Since this presentation does go on the website, there are some links that if parents want more information, they could click on the links and get more about NJSLA, DLM, and access. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. Is Into Math, is that, is waggle part of that?
Waggle is a part of the math.
Okay. Yeah, that's all.
Yeah. That's why that stuff doesn't work. All right, thank you very much. Okay, thanks, Windsor.
I think from yours, where you're sitting, it might be all right, Jen, like from an angle. So we have been working in PLCs. I am Kimberly Magrow. We're both the third grade teachers, so we're going to go over what PLCs are and how they have been working in our district. So a PLC is a professional learning community, which involves a team of educators who share ideas and enhance their teaching practice to create a learning environment where all students can reach their fullest potential. And most PLCs operate within a school building or across a district.
So the purpose of our PLC meeting are for educators to learn and grow, and our agenda usually revolves around the following. So we do, we talk about curriculum, instruction, assessment, interventions, and extensions of learning and being able to further the students' learning. Those, the staff that are included in a PLC are instructional assistants, the principal, vice principal, and all of the staff in the building, the teachers. We work collaboratively to attain the highest levels of student achievements in alignment with school goals, and effective PLC groups usually include four to six staff members. So how often do we meet? We meet formally twice a week for 40 minutes, Tuesdays and Thursdays, as a whole group.
hey, what are you doing? So it's nice that Oakland has time for collaboration to work together and really improve teacher Oakland's going to continue working on the social emotional learning. And Oakland has added an EL intervention time for, for classes, for teachers to visit all K to five classes for writing. Since this presentation does go on the website, there are some links that if parents want more information, they could click on the links and get more about NJSLA, DLM, and Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. Is Into Math, is that, is waggle part of that?
Waggle is a part of the math.
Okay. Yeah, that's all.
Yep. That's why that stuff doesn't work. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Wonder.
I think from yours, where you're sitting, it might be all right, Jen, like, from an angle. Anywhere.
So we have been working in PLCs. I am Kimberly Magro. We're both the third grade teachers. So we're going to go over what PLCs are and how they have been working in our district. So a PLC is a professional learning community, which involves a team of educators who share ideas and enhance their teaching practice to create a learning environment where all students can reach their fullest potential. And most PLCs operate within a school building or across a district.
So the purpose of our PLC meeting are for educators to learn and grow, and our agenda usually revolves around the following. So we do, we talk about curriculum, instruction, assessment, interventions, and extensions of learning, and being able to further the students' learning.
Those, the staff that are included in a PLC are instructional assistants, the principal, vice principal, and all of the staff in the building, the teachers. We work collaboratively to attain the highest levels of student achievements in alignment with school goals. And effective PLC groups usually include four to six staff members.
So how often do we meet? We meet formally twice a week for 40 minutes, Tuesdays and Thursdays as a whole group. During that, we study our curriculum, like, plan assessments, analyze any data that we have, and determine what we can do moving forward for interventions and how to group our students. And then we meet informally Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to further discuss planning and be able, oh, is there something at the bottom of that? I don't know. Does it say?
Oh, yeah, they take place, they take place in the morning before the students come in from eight to eight forty. So our goal is to improve teacher efficacy through our PLC work. And collective teacher efficacy is something developed by John Hattie, who's responsible for visible learning that we've been studying and training about, or studying and training. So collective teacher efficacy refers to the collective belief of all teachers that we have the expertise and the ability to positively impact students' learning. And John Hattie identifies collective teacher efficacy as having a huge impact on student achievement. There's different effect sizes of different things that take place in education, and the higher the effect size, the more impact it has on student achievement. So collective teacher efficacy, it has an effect size of 1.57, which is twice the size of giving feedback to students, and three times the impact of classroom management. The higher, like I said, the higher the effect size, the larger the impact on students.
We then kind of sent out a survey to our staff to ask their opinions and thoughts on how the PLC benefits them so far this year, and these are a couple of things that they have shared with us. PLCs are occurring before student arrival, therefore it doesn't disrupt the instructional time. Last year, we would have subs in the morning. It was a little bit chaotic trying to get on Zoom, get back to your classroom, so now it's uninterrupted time. Collaborating and reflecting on lessons and different strategies before the day begins really allows you to sit down and think about what you're going to do with your grade level partner. As an LAT, being able to have that time with your grade level partners to have a successful day. The consistency of collaborating is a valuable experience. Common planning time among grade levels, across grade levels, and with LATs is a wonderful way to help tailor instruction. It gives you time to analyze your data. And as a pull-out replacement teacher, it's great to have the ability to work at any grade level. So before, in the past, this teacher would only work with special ed, and now she has the ability to work with the LA, I'm sorry, the classroom teachers that she helps service instead of just special ed teachers.
And just a few more statements from our staff. As a new teacher to the district, PLC time has been extremely beneficial. Having a block of uninterrupted time to collaborate with both three level partners and the LAT professional gives an opportunity to study data, differentiate, discuss innovative ways to improve student learning outcomes. And the PLC time also gives an opportunity for them to ask questions and receive answers from veteran teachers. Another one, I love that we have time to plan, really plan, together for our roles in small group instruction. It's the best PLC experience I've had so far in my 14 years, someone said. As a new teacher, so some of us got moved around this year, as a new teacher at their grade level, it truly allows them the time to work with their grade partners better and get a better understanding of the curriculum and feel better prepared to teach their students. And shared planning, week to week, day to day, that really allows the teachers to stay on the same content, topics, assignments, as their grade level partners. You know, sometimes in the past, one teacher would do one thing and then be five days ahead of the other teacher. Kids coming home from school would have different assignments in their different classes. This year, we're really able to stay on the same page as each other, so it's been really helpful. I meet with Alicia every single morning, so. And that's it. Any questions?
This is in direct relation to the later opening, right? Like, the later arrival?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, that's great.
I just had a question. So to clarify, you meet every day, right?
Mm-hmm.
Five days. And were you able to do that last year?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No, I would say, you know, we had common prep time, but your prep time, you're making copies, you're going to the bathroom. You know, you're doing everything that you need to do that you didn't have time during the day, and PLCs were scheduled, you know, early dismissal days. They'd take time away from your instructional time where you'd go and meet in a different room, and someone was in your classroom with your kids. I think there were a bunch of assemblies set up, which were great. I didn't get to see any of them because I was in a PLC meeting. So this has just been a really nice way to handle it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can we give our teachers a round of applause, please?
Quickest presentation of the night, the SSDS report. I do not have a slideshow. This is very, very easy. So the SSDS, again, is the School Safety Data Systems Report. We are required to report twice in a year. So this report actually takes us from January 3, 2022, to June 17 of 2022, all the incidents that were reported at the end of last year for reporting period two, which I had to submit over the summer, and then I report to you in October. So we did have, between that time period, two reports of HIV, and both of them were investigated and ended up being confirmed. And we had two incidents leading to removal, meaning two suspensions. We also have to report staff trainings and staff programs. So we do most of our training in the beginning of the year, but towards the end of the year, they did have some GCN tutorials that were due. So there was one that related to suicide prevention that they did at the end of last year. And then we had quite a few programs to report. So we had the Random Acts of Kindness, Read Across America with a Focus on Diversity, Abilities Awareness Week. And then we also had our three district programs, our SEL program that ran during that time, our HAWKs program that ran during that time, and we also do another character ed lesson one per month that the teachers also did during that time. So that's the exciting SSDS report for Report Period Two at the end of last year. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we're up to Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to win the Committee of the Whole at this point?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in a Committee of the Whole at this point in time. Now, what does anybody have to bring to the entire board at this point in time? Okay, I'm going to have to take everybody in order.
I have one small thing. It wasn't on the agenda, brought up or anything, but the new, coming into the school, like, going into the gym, I've been noticing a lot of parents are walking their kids through the parking lot there, and some cars are backing up at the same time. It just seems a little dangerous. I don't let my kids, I make them take the sidewalk, but, yeah. Yep. Yep. Yeah. One would think so, but I've been watching, I've been watching a bunch of parents go that way, and, yeah. Could we put a sign up or something that says staff only? Cool, okay, that's all. Yeah.
Where do you think I'm putting a sign?
You know the side parking lot over here?
In the back?
No, the side.
Oh, right out front here, yeah.
Well, not out front, but out on the side, beside the gym. Not behind the building, but right at first, like.
All right, we're talking, we're talking the driveway, okay.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it can say staff only because of everybody that uses the field in the back, they all park back here. Okay. Oh, yeah. All right. That's it. Anybody else?
Just quick, I noticed when I was reviewing the minutes for the last meeting, in response during public comment, we talked about there being more information on curriculum presented. I think it was this meeting, but we had a lot of presentations tonight, so I'm just wondering if there's a plan for more information on our curriculum to be presented at a future meeting. It was in response to a question.
I'm sorry, which month? I know we have got presentations lined up for the entire academic year, you know, Jen, do you remember which month?
Sorry, Patrick's going to yell at me. Do you remember which month we were going to do a deep dive in curriculum?
Okay, so a motion to close the Committee of the Whole?
Somebody? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're now back in the regular meeting. Future dates are listed there for everyone's perusal. OmeSAC gym night, did we?
That, so, yeah. Okay, so they can have the one in October, but we did get the OmeSAC use of facilities for the gym nights and the men's over 30 basketball. It didn't contain the required insurance certificate, so we did write back. And the use of the gym for the over 30 basketball was for the entire year, and as is consistent with finance buildings and grounds, you guys want it by season, so make sure it doesn't conflict with other school activities. So we asked for a revision. So it's expected that I should get, hopefully, everything in time for November. But the October gym night, we said was okay to go forward, and then everything else we'll look at in November in committee.
There's, if I could ask a question, there's a November 4 gym night, which would be before the next meeting, so is that one canceled?
I would, I would assume that's fine if it doesn't conflict with PTA or anything Ms. Bolden has going on. The issue really is just the over 30 men's basketball. We just want to make sure that everything's complete as per what we've done in the past.
Okay, paragraph six, routine business, approval of minutes from September 20. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Are there any questions or corrections on any of the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Now there's no unfinished business, and now we're up to the public comment. The, this is the first of two. This session is for agenda items only. If you have anything to bring to the board, please stand up, come up to the microphone, which we're going to move back here in a minute, and tell us your name and address and what's on your mind, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less. And this is agenda items only. Again, it'll be another opportunity later in the meeting. Sorry, as it turns out. It's all good for your diet, Patrick. Okay, no one has anything? Okay, we'll move right along then to the superintendent's report.
So good evening, everyone. Section 8.01 is the enrollment. Enrollment for September of 2021 was 256. As of September of 2022 is 279 with the principal's report attached. There are no suspensions, no anti-bullying reports, and the child study team report is attached for section 8.05.
Can I ask a question? So under the principal's report for the enrollment and school safety drill, there, it's two different versions of the report, and I believe that the one under 8.02 is the correct one. Bill, I noticed it because the number of ninth grade students is different in the two reports. So the one with 53 is correct, which is under 8.02, so that one should be replaced, what's under 8.01, I believe.
8.02 is the one that's correct?
I'm sorry?
8.02 is the one that's correct?
That's correct, yes.
I printed one out, but unfortunately, I don't know which one it is.
I think the only difference is.
It's got the security drill report on it.
I'm sorry?
This, this one that I have has the security drill on it.
Right, I think they both do.
Okay, no, I was, I was just asking to see if I had to write one.
Yeah, no.
Okay. I have a question on that, speaking of that, and I know this, this was July 28, so there weren't a lot of kids in the building at that point in time, but the evacuation from the second floor took 14 minutes and nine seconds. Okay. That shouldn't count as evacuation time. We don't care whether you get out or not. I, I don't know if this is the right place to ask this either, but it's on your, on your report also. We no longer show transfer in and transfer out. Is there a reason for that? Who do we receive the form from? It's in Oakland, it's the Oakland, it's the elementary grades. Are we filling out the in and out? Okay, that, because that's suddenly becoming more important. Can we make sure that we do that henceforth and forevermore? Okay. Yeah, I'd kind of like to get that same information for the Collins report as well, how many kids we have coming in, how many we have coming out. Yeah. You know, the, the population may remain the same, but we may have five kids come in and five kids leave, and it's kind of nice to know that we have that much transition.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And you guys, I'm not sure, you guys don't know the answer to this, but on the child study team report, there are, and I'm not sure that this is even appropriate, but I've got a couple of questions on the report. One is, there are two crisis interventions, and we may not be able to discuss that.
No.
I would be my guess. We have one, transfer in meetings. The heck is that? Anybody? Oh, transferring into the district, okay. And then we have, down at the bottom, we have three individuals and 17 individuals. I guess this is probably supposed to come across from the counseling sessions. Can you read it from there?
Yeah.
That's what it is.
It's counseling.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Good.
Anybody have other questions? Okay. Business administrator and board secretary's report.
All right, tonight I have for you, for approval, the September 2022 budget transfer report, your 2022 board secretary, treasurer, cash reports, and all the related financial backup, the October purchase orders that have been issued on your behalf, and in 9.04, a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning upon approval. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, section 10, finance buildings and grounds. Todd, you're up, I'm sorry.
All right, so items 10.01 through 10.06 were just presented by Ms. Coleman for
All right, so items ten point oh one through ten point oh six were just presented by Ms. Coleman for approval. Uh, item ten point oh seven, we're looking for approval of our comprehensive maintenance plan for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year. Uh, item ten point oh eight, uh, we're looking for approval of the, uh, twenty twenty-two school security grant, which, uh, two and a half years later was finally approved, so we're happy for that. Uh, item ten point oh, uh, ten point zero nine is the ARP IDEA consolidated grant amendment. Uh, we're amending it to include some carryovers, so we're looking for approval, uh, for that item there. And item ten point ten is a use of, uh, facilities request, uh, for the Oakland PTA to use the school for PTA sponsored events from September sixteenth through June ninth, uh, in accordance with the attached spreadsheet. So we're looking, uh, for approval on items ten point oh one through ten point one oh.
Okay, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any questions on any of those items? Uh, on a roll call, please.
Mrs. Papel?
Yes.
Sorry. Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian? Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, paragraph eleven, or section eleven, uh, Mrs. Riley, who's not here tonight, but there's only one, oh, okay, there's.
Or, or you can do it, I was just, I told, um, just, we just have the one item, and that's a trap travel expense form in item eleven point zero three. Just one item for approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve item eleven point oh three? Second. Any questions on it? On a roll call.
Mrs. Papel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, section twelve, school and community relations, Denise.
I'm gonna present the PTA report first. Uh, the PTA met on October fourth. Um, they have an excellent board in place this year, uh, and definitely have hit the ground running, are very organized, um, with a number of events so far. Um, so I just wanna mention that on Friday, uh, we have a family fun movie night here, um, which turned into be quite an adventure, um, because of the popcorn maker, um, set off the, uh, fire alarm. Um, but I have to say it was wonderful because as the adults sorta looked around, we're like, what do we do? The kids got up and they marched outside, and it was fantastic. They knew, they knew exactly what to do. Um, so we waited outside on Kendall Boulevard while multiple, um, members of the police department and the fire truck showed up, uh, cleared the building, and we were all allowed to safely return inside. Um, it definitely made it a much more adventurous evening. Everyone was fine, nobody was hurt, there was no smoke or anything, but very happy for the, uh, prompt response. Um, other than that, we have, um, there's a dine and donate coming up at the poorhouse, um, next week. Um, there is a pretzel sale for pumpkin-shaped pretzels that'll be coming up. And also, the room ambassadors are working on parties for the fall festival on October thirty-first, which is an early dismissal day this year, and, um, more events coming up in future months. Our next meeting will be on, on November fourth, thank you, the first Tuesday. And that's it.
Okay, thanks, Denise.
No, okay. November first, November first. Apologies, yes, because Halloween's on a Monday, yes. Um, Theresa, you have a Ome-SAC, I'll think.
Um, sure, so we've already talked about the gym nights, so, um, hopefully those will be approved, um, for, and the first one being the twenty-first, which is this Friday. Um, the, uh, Ome-SAC is, um, supporting Red Ribbon Week, and they are meeting on Monday, so that's all I have.
Bill, you have an update on Collinswood?
Okay, Collinswood's meeting on the twenty-seventh of September, which was a month ago. Uh, the student board members were sworn in, uh, there are three, one from each of the sending districts. The one from Oakland is Aiden DeMarco, uh, who does a very good job. They all do a very good job, but Oakland is, is just a smidgen little bit above. Don't tell you, I'm sorry, guys, I said that. Uh, the intro to math, uh, program was presented. Uh, committee of the whole discussed graduation gowns and, uh, middle school computers as well as vision two oh, uh, vision twenty twenty-six. College planning night was scheduled for November, is scheduled for November seventeenth. Uh, they approved the standard operating procedures, they approved, uh, joining the Burlington County, uh, Scholastic League, which I believe is only for volleyball, so that the kids can play in a volleyball league. Uh, they approved, uh, contract for the support staff bonuses, uh, as was done in Oakland with the, uh, if you've been there more than five years, you get a three hundred dollar bonus and some additional time. Uh, they approved several use of facilities requests, they approved the high school field trip for the German students, uh, and the UN conference. Uh, they approved, the, incidentally, the, the field trip for the high schools, for the German students, they're not going to Germany, that's not what we approved. We, is it? They're coming here, right? And that might be. Yeah, that might be when they were picking them up, going up to New York to pick them up. Uh, they approved the senior trip to Orlando on June sixth to the tenth, twenty twenty-three. They approved the emergency remote instruction plan, they approved various personnel changes, they approved athletic head coaches for the winter and spring, uh, sports. They approved issuance of, uh, I, I can't write, they approved, uh, issuance of several stipends, um, and they approved a number of, uh, policies on the first reading. And that was about it? Any questions on that? Okay.
Hi, Jimmy, for the Oakland Education Foundation, I think.
So rumor around town is they're meeting this week, on Thursday. I will not make it if I have a spy that will be there to take notes from our presentation next time.
It's gonna be a candy fundraising sale, we know that's imminent, Gertrude Hawk, yeah.
Um, and on twelve point oh five, there are, um, some policies under here for first reading, so these are changes that come from our, um, Strauss Espe?
The policy police.
The policy police, right. So these are, uh, changes that are, um, recommended from them, some of them are mandated changes, um, so we just, uh, adjusted them here, so if you look at the policy, you can see, um, hopefully, actually, no. These ones don't have the changes. So I think the changes are incorporated, just not highlighted here. Um, okay, so we, maybe we can put them up so they can see what is, um, changed. Um, but this is just the first reading, and then we'll have the second reading of these policies next month.
And gets hit with a needle.
Yeah. Yeah. Perfect. All right, so that's it. Do we need an approval on anything? I don't think so, not yet, since this is the first reading.
We'll prove, we'll approve them, and then next month it'll be the, the final read, final approval.
Okay, we need a motion to approve item twelve point oh five, the policies for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded, any questions on any of those? Bear in mind, that's the first reading, you can make changes before you adopt them finally, uh, if you find anything over the next month you wanna change. So at any rate, a roll call, please.
Mrs. Papel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, paragraph thirteen, uh, hip report for the previous month, there was none reported, that's always good. Uh, standing orders, uh, for treatments in the case of emergency. Uh, I have no idea if anybody wants to discuss that. It's beyond me.
That's just normal, we get it from the school doctor, a list of standing orders that, um, both districts have to, have to approve every year. So this is, we do it every year.
Okay. So then, we need a, and a motion to approve that item, uh, thirteen point oh two.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded, any questions on it? Uh, on a roll call.
Mrs. Papel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, here's your public, uh, public, uh, participation the second time around, this time you can talk about anything you'd like. Uh, same rules, stand, come up to the mic, give us your name and address, uh, keep your comments to five minutes or less, and it's open. You're gonna get tired of hearing from me. Blue Money is twenty-three Johnson Avenue. Okay. Last month I was here and I mentioned a few things, but I didn't have all the facts. So I have a question for the board, specifically the superintendent. The new rule that has come down from the Department of Education requiring sex education standards to reach ten-year-olds to include sexual orientation and gender identity, has that been advertised to the parents? Yes, no? I, I don't know the answer to.
So, let's just provide some, some, some clarity. Those standards were actually approved in twenty twenty.
Correct.
Right.
Was that, that was during the pandemic. Have the parents been notified of what those are?
So standards actually come from the state?
Correct.
So in terms of implementation, we're in the process of reviewing and aligning, um, at what implementation looks like in the most developmentally appropriate way. So, once we actually have something to show families, uh, we will come to families, um, with that information. There was no curri- so the standard, a standard is, is, it's a line item that is dictated or mandated by the state.
It's pretty specific, what I've got here.
The curriculum or the implementation of what it actually looks like in schools across the state is going to be left to each school district to determine or to interpret. Um, we're not, we're not there yet.
Okay. Now, they say if you don't implement it within a certain period of time, you're gonna get punished. I'm, I'm serious. Did it mention now we're gonna be punished?
I would.
No, they didn't say that.
I would share that there are a hundred and fifty vacancies with the New Jersey Department of Education. Um, we're not, we're not there yet, so we're not, we're not worried.
I'm just reading what, what, you know, the, the policy came out from Department of Education, and it, it specifically covers third grade kids where it basically says, and I'm gonna quote here, "Ten-year-olds must be taught to describe the gender role stereotypes and how these stereotypes affect themselves and those around them. Fifth grade students must also be taught how to promote dignity and respect for all of those with different sexual orientation, gender identity, race, socioeconomic status, and standards. By the end of the fifth grade curriculum, the students must be able to explain the ways pregnancy can be achieved." But again, we, we have nothing at this point to. I know. To discuss with you. This is what the state says, and, and I'm, I'm quoting it, Bill. It's ridiculous. Well, you gotta remember, there's, there's always, they, they publish a law, and here it is, this is what the law says, and then they publish a document that says, this is what it really means. And I, I don't know whether we've seen the one that says, this is what it really means. And, and they have people coming in to review what you're doing in regards to this. If you don't get eighty percent on the score, then you're fined, I don't know what, but you're penalized.
You're talking about. You're talking about CUSAC, which is a, um, which is the state review, that happens every five years?
No, no, this is, this is ongoing.
But what I'm saying is, is that there is a five-year process where the state comes in.
According to this, it's totally different.
Can I finish? There is a five-year process in which the state comes in to review everything from curriculum to personnel to governance. There's five core areas. Curriculum is one part, so curriculum and instruction, and that's, uh, they take samplings around all aspects of your curriculum. They look at all of your programs, um, we're just not there yet. So, one of the things that is extremely important for our community to understand is that between our board, between our faculty and staff, we are very mindful that this is a hot topic. We are taking our time in order to figure out what are the most developmentally appropriate ways to adhere to the standard and honor the values of our community.
Okay, I, I, I'll go along with that. But it also says, the schools are tracked in five categories, and when they, if they score below eighty percent in any category, they are subject to punishment and intervention by the state. Man alive, I mean, that's, that's pretty brutal. Okay, continuing on. Okay, they did a survey. Lou, you gotta read faster, remember, you got a five-minute limit. I know, come on, you know. The majority of nationwide voters, seventy percent, believe elementary school students should not learn about sexual orientation and gender identity. Fifty-one percent still oppose instruction on sexual orientation and gender identity through the eighth grade. Now, the only way a parent can opt out of this program of whatever you're gonna come up with is they've gotta write a personal letter to the principal. Okay? Now, I heard, and I don't know how true this one is, but there's a couple of s- school districts that instead of opting out, they want parents to opt in. I've seen that. Okay, which, you know. That's not what the law says, though, the law says you can opt out. Correct. Whether some of this is constitutional or not is another story. Yeah, that, that decision will be ten years down the road. Well, I know, but. You and I won't have to worry about it, Lou. You know, see what I'm saying, though, Bill? It's, it's getting to the point where parents don't have control over teaching their kids about anything. I agree, but unfortunately, you're coming here and telling us that, you're, you're preaching to the choir, basically. Who you wanna preach to is the people that reside in Trenton, they get paid a lot of money. I do some of that. To come up with these brilliant ideas. I do some of that, okay? Well, again, that's, that's the proper venue for, uh, for getting it changed. But again, I'm one person, but how about all of you folks? I mean, you know, say something about it, you know, this is America. It is. And we're allowed to speak our piece. Yes, you are. Thank you very much for listening to me over the five minutes, I apologize for that. Okay, you owe us a couple of minutes. Okay. All right. Thanks, Lou. Chuck? Does the rest of the public wanna say anything? No? Okay. So I'll have to close that portion, then go to section fifteen, which is the motion to adjourn. Anybody wanna adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
And could the ad hoc committee for the tuition agreement stay back as requested last week?
Yes, there's gonna be a committee meeting of the, uh, the ad hoc committee for, uh, for tuition, I'm sorry.
Sure.